It being a little after 7:00 PM, let's open the Kingston zoning board of appeals for June 5th, 2024. First on the agenda, we're gonna do Cushman because they are continuing. Does anyone have that? Lane, do you have that hearing at all or no?
They're behind the agenda.
Okay. You have Cushman there too?
Yeah.
Yep.
Public hearing will be held at Town Hall. I don't need to open this.
No, you can just do the, you can just fast read it.
Yeah. A public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street to hear the petition of Cushman Farms LLC, 33 Cushman Drive, Kingston, Mass. To request a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. I'll make a motion to continue this.
What do they want to continue to? Deb.
Uh, let's see. July 17th at 7:20.
I thought we already, oh, no, we didn't. You're right.
Is that already on the?
They'll be the last fiddle on that one.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to continue it to July 17th at 7:20.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Next up on the agenda.
No, Marcia's on too.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five. She's an associate on that one.
I think she wants to do the minutes.
Oh, yeah. She's, well, she's fine. I like she's here. Oh, do you want to get minutes out of the way right now so she doesn't have to hang?
Yeah.
Very good. We can go through the minutes real quick. October, December, March.
I don't know.
And May. All right, we'll approve these minutes real quick. Make a motion to approve October 19th, 2022's minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Marcia, just in case.
She wasn't here.
Just making sure, just in case.
Oh, she wasn't here?
No.
Oh, you weren't here? You got away with that one.
Mm-hmm. They're the only two there.
The tail end of it.
Not 2023?
2023.
Oh, these are, okay. So they are from then.
I went through everything and.
Okay.
So who want to make a motion to accept December 7th of 2022?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of December 7th, 2020. Jesus.
Is it three or two?
Two.
Two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Next up is March 6th.
I can make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes from March 6th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Marcia, you're on that one if you want to vote.
Marcia, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, you're muted.
I got it.
There you are.
Hey, I approve.
Those are the signs.
Actually, you and Doug weren't here on 3/6.
Oh, let's go back then.
Yeah.
Someone else needs to make a motion.
For the March 6th?
Yes.
Yeah, you and I left.
I moved that we approved the minutes of the March 6th meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Marcia Makin's eye.
Oh, you seconded it. Perfect. Easy enough fix. Bob, you're not, you're not on the next one? Make a motion to approve March 20th, 2024 minutes? Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Marcia Makin's eye.
Perfect.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the May 15th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Can I get a second?
I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Marcia Makin's eye.
Perfect.
Every gentleman, I'm gonna sign off. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is River View Properties LLC.
Um, on remand from the Housing Appeals Committee, a public hearing will be held at Town Hall, uh, on Wednesday, May 1st, 2024 at 7:10 PM to hear the petition of Thomas Drummond, manager, uh, River View Properties, 67 Cushing Drive, to request a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, to allow construction of 12 units, including three affordable units located off May Ave and post court, uh, Kingston, Mass. I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. What do you guys got talking? Let's take it away.
Good evening, members of the void. My name is Attorney Robert Galvin. I represent the applicant, River View Properties LLC. With me tonight is Brad McKenzie from McKenzie Engineering Group. Uh, he's the project engineer. Next to Brad is Tom Drummond. He's the principal in River View Properties. And next to him is seated Paul Cusson, who's our financial consultant and, uh, 40B consultant on this particular project. Uh, just by way of brief background, this project began back in 2020 when the Mass Housing, uh, Mass Housing issued a project eligibility letter for this particular property off of May Ave and post court for 24 units, six of which would have been affordable. The original application was submitted to the board on December 3rd, 2020. Uh, the project was reduced to a 20-unit project with, uh, um, the appropriate number of affordable units. Uh, the public hearing began in 2021 on January 6th. The public hearing closed the following September and, uh, during the process of the public hearing, when I became involved, there was a 16-unit plan in front of the board and that was the final plan that was offered to the board, um, during the public hearing process. Um, the board filed the decision on October 8th of 2021. Uh, it reduced the project by condition to four units, uh, and enumerated 55 other conditions on the project, uh, resulting in our appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. There was a separate unrelated proceeding that was in the Superior Court involving rights in post court. Um, doesn't have any bearing on the board's particular action, but just in general, so you're aware of it. Um, a portion of this site has deeded access rights up post court. The proposed project provided for emergency access up post court and there was a dispute about whether the entirety of the property could be served by emergency access and that's the nature of the Superior Court action. Um, that matter is stayed pending the results of what we do here and, um, uh, it's likely that that will either resolve or be decided by a dispositive motion. Again, not having ultimate too, too much bearing and I'll explain why tonight. Over the course of the number of years that this has been going on, we ultimately agreed to mediation here, uh, at the Town Hall last fall. We spent an entire day here trying to come up with a solution. Um, everybody, including the Butters attorney, uh, acted, I think, in good faith. We just couldn't come to an agreement. Um, in the early portion of this year, we completed the paperwork with the Housing Appeals Committee to schedule a hearing, um, and as a result of conversations with Attorney Talaman, um, we, uh, agreed to come back to the board and demonstrate to you a 12-unit plan. Half of what we originally thought, um, eight units less than what we applied for, um, and six units less than what we ultimately were offering to the board. We believe that this type of a project meets many of the requirements that, uh, found its way into conditions, uh, for the board, changes the character of the development, pulls the development away from the wetlands further. Um, it's a small site to begin with, but it's a lot less dense now. Um, the, the economics of this project are, uh, at the margins of what is acceptable to our client, Mr. Drummond. We've got pro formas for 24 units, 20 units, 16 units, 12 units, eight units and four units, and it is not economic really at the 12 units unless the market sustains the current market values to units. So the project that I'm gonna let Mr. McKenzie describe in just a little bit more detail now was a reduction down from 20 or 16 to the 12 units. We're gonna retain the existing home that's currently accessed post, off post court, but, and this plan doesn't detail it, but we are going to have no access to this development off post court. Um, it's made, been abundantly clear that the Butters don't want to see access off the post court.
What if fire say to that? Fire wants a two, department wants a two-piece access.
Well, uh, we, we believe that the fire department will approve this because of the, because of the turnaround and the reduction in the number of units. We haven't been back to fire at this particular point.
That seems like that would be a kind of a major hurdle.
Well, fire department had given us prior access or prior approval for the prior project where we had emergency only access.
You had two pieces of access on the prior one.
The fire chief, the fire chief only required was okay with the, with the.
You have to go to the mic to speak, please.
I'll, I'll let Mr. Cusson address the fire department issue. In any event, um, I'm gonna let Brad describe the plan a little bit more detail because we have an overlay of what was previously approved and we'll show you how it's different from what was previously out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Or do you want to, Paul, you want to?
For the record, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. We did submit only a few days ago, uh, through, through Deborah, a plan that we thought would be helpful that compares the plan that was acted on by the board, which is the 20-unit plan, to the, the 12-unit plan that we're talking about tonight. And, um, you should have handouts. I believe you have handouts. Do you have, do you have print, do you have 11x17s of this plan?
Yeah.
Deb was kind enough to make these copies, um, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday of this week. So what that schematic shows in black is the, the 12-unit plan that is presently being contemplated and in red underneath it is the 12, 20-unit plan that the board voted on a few years ago. So you can see that the impacts overall are much less, um, are much less in terms of, as Bob mentioned, greater buffers to wetland resources. Um, there's this, now, the roadway is only about 300, about 300 feet long instead of almost 500. It ends essentially right here, which is, this turnaround is in the same, same dimensions and configuration as the turnaround that was approved by the fire department, which is shown in red down, all the way down here, closer to post court.
Last I knew, you know this probably better than I do, fire department doesn't like hammerheads.
They approved it.
You have a letter in the file.
There's a letter in the file, exactly. So, um.
They were having a problem getting the ladder truck over the hump of, of the grade at the beginning.
The hump?
Yes, so you have a grade change because you're in two dimension, you're in three dimension?
Yeah.
So at the turn on the right when you come in, there's a grade change of better than 4% for, for the new ladder, the tower truck. So I don't know if you got approved for that because I know they had an issue with that, making that turn.
They reviewed, they reviewed the plan that you acted on and they approved the turnaround.
But they had an issue with that turn in. I remember they did.
They approved it.
That, that issue was not raised in that letter.
It was raised. I don't know, I remember it was talked, at the very end, it was definitely talked about because of the new tower truck was coming online.
And what was the issue with the grade?
So the grade is, has a pitch that goes downward, but you guys go upward to the right, so the tower truck couldn't make the cut. Like I said, this is two dimension, not three dimension.
I understand, but that.
You have a downward grade and you guys are on an upward grade, so for the tower truck to make that turn, it was gonna bottom out on that turn.
Well, it, it, ultimately, they approved the turnaround. That's all I, that's all I can say. It was not mentioned in their letter. The grade issue was not mentioned in their letter.
But that plan that they approved had an emergency access on the other side?
Yeah, it did. It did have opening.
It was gated.
So that letter means kind of nothing to me. I mean, they approved something with, it's completely different.
I mean, this is a remand. You understand that this is a remand.
I think, I think we're here tonight to see, we haven't gotten that far with the design, obviously.
Okay, okay.
We're here tonight to see if the board has, might have the intention to like, to, to approve this plan in lieu of the plan that was acted on a few years ago that is, that is currently before the HAC. So we're here, we understand that we've got to go through, these plans are nothing more than conceptual preliminary plans at this point.
Very good.
And if the feedback is positive from the board, you know, based on this, the discussions we have with you tonight, um, we may take it, you know, the client may elect to take this to the next level and prepare more detailed engineering drawings, the fire department, there'll be another peer review, stormwater review, the fire department will review the plan, we'll go through the whole process again. But I think what I want to talk about is just comparing the two plans and educating the board on how less impactful this plan is to, in terms of infrastructure, the environment, you can see the difference between the setbacks. There's buildings here, there's nothing here now. Um, overall, uh, much less work within the 50, 50 and 100-foot buffer zone to the BBW. Um, roadway is 500 feet, the 20-unit plan, 300 feet, 12-unit plan. Overall impervious area is reduced by 30%. I think it's about 39,000 square feet, counting the roofs of the units, all the impervious, all the, all the asphalt, um, back driveways, parking areas, to 27,000 square feet for the 12-unit plan. So there'll be obviously corresponding, um, decreases in stormwater impacts, um, for that matter.
The problem is conceptual is to, even to move to the next level, you're missing pieces of the conceptual. Like, you don't have the ability, where do you put snow? Where do you put if, if someone has a party for a birthday party, whereas people park their?
There's actually, there's actually a lot of areas to put snow on this plan. There's more, there's more space on this plan to put snow than there is on the 20-unit plan.
So the, but that's, that's considering that you have nothing but grass everywhere and no, no trees or nothing anywhere. I understand this, I understand this conceptual and there's no trees, no landscaping.
Yeah.
But my point is, is so, this is so conceptual that it's, it's almost black and white. It doesn't even have.
Well, again, we're here as a starting point to talk about the reduced impacts of the 12-unit plan versus the 20 that's being contemplated by HAC.
And I understand that.
And if the feedback is positive, client may elect to move forward and provide additional detail at the board's request.
I get that, but at the same time, these still, this is shoehorned as tight as can be with the, with pieces that are still, it would might shave or change the concept to another concept down the road, if you get what I'm saying.
There's, there's no issue, I, I really, I don't understand the issue with snow storage. It's all, this, there's.
No one does. We don't have snow in the last couple of years.
But there's 30, there's 30% more open space on this plan than there was on the other one.
Well, the other one got pushed down to four units, so we don't, we don't consider the other one even, anyway. Paul, if you want to talk, you gotta move up.
Thank you.
Um, that being said, my point is, your last conceptual got pushed to four units. Just because you gave us 500 units on the last one, it means zero. My point is, this is your new, this is like a brand new thing to us and I guess the concept, but at the same time, we have to see this concept as you are going to through to the end. So there has to be some parts that are kind of a big piece to it. Snow removal, open space, um, is there gonna be down the road? Where are people gonna park? They can't park on post court or whatever.
I don't see any parking here for guests, are there guest spots?
So these are part of the conceptual that would, would change your concept to another concept. That's my point, I guess I'm getting at.
Perhaps, you know.
Because you're using all the space that you can to the T and then we're gonna say, listen, where do you, where do you put all the people to park? And you go, well, we'll add more parking. And then we go, well, then where you're gonna have the open space that you just changed. So you, either you're gonna have to lose units again or you're gonna have to add more pavement.
No, there's plenty of room from, to add a few visitor parking spaces. These, these.
Exactly. So your original statement had a, had an impervious thing.
There are two car garages with driveways large enough to accommodate another two cars.
Okay.
So, I mean.
We have, the only reason we have this argument, we have it with other 40Bs all the time.
What's that?
We have this exact argument with all the 40Bs all the time. They, they make it perfect for every unit to be there. They just don't think of like, if they have a family party, where does everyone park? Where's grandma park? And where's grandpa park? Where does aunts and uncles park? Not everybody just has a, the two cars are full, usually that's full of stuff.
We're, we're starting where the bare bones plan, if the, to see if the board has any inclination to support a reduced density project other than the one that is before the HAC, um, for 20 units.
I know.
So, so, you know, we had, we understand additional detail would need to be provided for you to act on a plan, for you to, for you to feel comfortable with a reduced density plan.
We just wanted to see it a little more realistic.
This is 60%, all the impacts are essentially 60% of the 20-unit plan and 50, and, and, you know, much, much, 50, 50% of the plan, of the 24-unit plan that was issued, that was approved, uh, density was approved by, um, the Mass Housing. I mean, uh, HA, uh, Mass Housing.
I have a question.
It was really a letter.
On the 20-unit plan, what were the, um, like bedrooms, bathrooms?
Bedrooms, I, I can't recall bedrooms and bathrooms, I just can't.
Well, how many, so have you increased the amount of people in these 12? Or are they the same units?
Nobody's asking, is it a two-bedroom? Now you go to three, went to three-bedroom? In other words, the count of bedrooms stay the same? Go ahead, Paul.
It's the same?
The bedroom count, Paul Cusson, Delphic Associates, the bedroom count has been reduced, uh, from, um, from the, um, plan that was previously presented with 20 units, the plan that we have today.
Oh, check your mic, sorry. Check your mic.
I'm sorry.
Could you please speak into the mic? Thank you.
What I'm saying is that.
I don't think it's on.
Sorry, just check the dot.
He's saying it's not on.
Paul, just check the dot in front of you. It's green.
Is it green?
On now?
Yes.
Okay. Paul Cusson, Delphic Associates. So the total, so we've reduced it to 12 units. So the bedroom count has been appropriately proportionally reduced from the total number of, so we're not making them all four bedrooms, for example.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no significant change in the bedroom configuration proportionally to what we had before. One of the things that, that, uh, was not mentioned is along post court, uh, one of the substantial changes in the plan is that there's a substantial buffer now. There's, there's an existing house towards, that Butts, uh, post court that presently is being accessed from post court. This plan eliminates, uh, that access completely, so there will be no access from post court to the development. The existing house will be accessed from within the development. Furthermore, there's a substantial buffer, um, between post court and, you can see on the plan here that, that we're willing to burn that and do whatever, so there won't be any access. We assume that the fire department is okay with that. Um, and we have spoken to the fire department in the past and they have, as Brad has said, they have given a letter approving it, so there may be some details, but the only reason we're here tonight is, um, I had a long conversation with, with the developer about, and, and a long conversation, uh, with, with Jay and I respect Jay immensely. And Jay suggested that, you know, why fight over this in court? You know, we could end up in Superior Court, let's try to, let's try to work a deal. So we, we went to mediation and we were willing to give, the town wasn't giving, so, and it, so that never worked. So we tried that. So, so this plan is our attempt to get the board to approve a layout of 12 units. Are there some things that still need to be worked out? Yes, but if you're not gonna, as, as an example, when we had the 20-unit plan before the board, we had all of the engineering approved on peer review. Your peer review engineered everything, the traffic, everything was done, every, we did everything the board wanted and we proved that it worked. Then the board decided, screw it, I don't care what the engineering says, I'm not gonna approve it. So we are asking now that, for the board to approve the basic layout of these 12 units. If you're inclined not to approve 12 units, I understand that and I appreciate that, then we go on. But we'd rather work with the town and try to come up with something that you're not happy with and we might not be happy with, but it works. And it barely works financially. The fire chief, the, the, you know, the, where additional parking, we got places now to add that additional parking and we're willing to do that. But that's a detail. I don't want to go through the details until we have a nod from the board saying, you know, the plan's not all that bad, I can support a 12-unit plan. Because up till now, the board's only approved the four-unit plan.
Correct.
And there's still a long way between four units and 12 units for the board to, to consider.
Very good.
So I have, I have strict instructions that the developer, um, wants to work with the town, but, you know, if that doesn't happen, he appreciates everything and we'll just let cars fall where they could fall. And I'd rather, frankly myself, I'd rather not do that.
We're just.
And we maintain a very good relationship in the town. We've done several 40Bs, we're finishing up one, Timber, Timber Crest, and I, I think if you've been there, you can see the, the quality of those developments.
Um, I'll ask the board any quick questions real quick. Uh, Lane, because I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, uh, town council up and then Jason up real quick.
I just, I, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from, that you don't want to go through the entire process to present us with the information, but we didn't just say screw it on the last one, we.
That was exactly the wording. The wording was, I don't give a damn what, what the engineering says, I don't give a damn what, I cannot support that plan.
Well, personally, I looked at what the engineering said and what the conservation commission said and what the neighbors said, and so I went through that process to make an educated decision on the last one.
Okay.
Using all of the information that you presented to us. You're presenting us with bare bones information. I don't know how this is gonna affect the wetlands in the back because the conservation.
The wetland?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I know.
I mean, you can tell me all you want, but then I would like the expert to tell me.
I know you don't know, but you know there are 12 units and you know that we have pushed the units further away from the wetland and you know on the 20-unit plan, the wetland worked. Now, we never went through, uh, we, we got, Brad Holmes submitted his report and so forth. We never got to the point of notice of intent, but we know that the wetland was approved and we know that we've pushed it further away, so we know that.
How much further though? Because the copy that we have.
But not much. I'll be honest with you, the. I'll be honest with you, the, the units.
Not much?
Not much.
Okay, I mean, that's.
The, the major changes are, are budding post-court. And, and there's a change, there's a substantial change right in this area. There was, there was a unit there, there's.
Where the red, where the red unit, red building is right now.
Yeah, but then, but I see, yeah, I mean, I would need.
It's hard to see on that plan.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I, I don't, that was my comment, not really a question.
Doug?
I'm still taking everything in.
Very good. Kevin?
The plan, yeah, needs a lot more work, I think it's, um, you know, twelve units is still a lot for that.
Well, then deny it, just say no. Don't, don't jerk us around, don't jerk us, don't jerk us around.
I, I'm, I'm not doing that, but, but you come up with these plans, okay? And, and you say you're out of the wetlands, but over here on the left, um, the wetland line is deviated right into number one.
I, I don't know what he's referring to, Brad, there.
No.
That might be the two-hundred-foot buffel.
The, the.
It doesn't say it here.
Maybe Brad can, oh, well.
That upper, that upper hash that goes through the unit one? Yeah, there's a hash, there's a hash mark that comes, comes kinda through it.
All right, first of all, the existing home is here. So we're actually both plans, the twelve-unit plan and the twenty-unit plan, pulling a building about forty feet further away from the weather here. This will all be restored. So this is a constant between the two plans, in fact, the twelve-unit plan is a little bit further away from the weather than the, than the twenty-unit plan.
But that is wetlands going through unit one?
No, no.
What is that?
The weather's, the weather's here.
All right, what's that hash mark that's going through?
It's a buffer zone, fifty-foot buffer zone.
Okay, that's what I was.
It's fifty feet from the weather.
Okay.
Okay. And all the other units are further away from the weather. I mean, this building's gone, this building is essentially almost on post-court, probably twenty feet from flag A three, it's gone. These units have all been pulled back, so, in my opinion, the, the impacts of the buffer zone, there's no weathered alteration proposed in this project, but the impacts to the buffer zone are much less on this plan. It's all indicated, I didn't get the chance, I didn't get to the rest of what I wanted to say, but with this configuration, keeping, retaining the single-family home and the garage, where this turnaround once was, is now proposed to be a mounded landscape area. Okay, so we're gonna mound it to provide, and with a lot of vegetation over it, trees, shrubs, to be designed by a professional landscape architect, to provide a substantial buffer to these properties.
To post-court.
To post-court.
What about the properties to the left of that?
To the left, over here?
Yeah.
Well, this, this building's gone now. There's a building that's ten, ten or fifteen feet from the property line, this is all gone, this is all.
I'm just trying to figure out why you're buffering, buffering an existing house that's already there to the.
I'm sorry?
Trying to figure out why you're putting a buffer between an existing house that's already there, but you don't wanna put a buffer between the three, between unit ten, eleven, twelve, to the other existing houses that are there.
Ten, eleven, and twelve. Over here, well, I mean, if you.
You, you, you have no problem adding a buffer, that's a huge zone.
We don't have a landscape plan yet, we're not, we're not.
I, I understand, it's just weird that you put it, you put it in this plan.
This is a conceptual plan, and as Paul indicated, if it's one that the board thinks they couldn't accept with further development and more engineering, then we'll, we'll take that next step.
Just trying to figure out your math, that's all.
I mean, this area also, as, as Brad just pointed, where the building is gone, that's all open space, and we could put parking there.
Well, if it's open space, we don't want parking there, that's, that's.
Then don't put it, I don't care.
Don't call it open space, you don't want parking in it.
Don't say you want it, but then you don't want it.
Kevin, sorry.
It's just, you know.
I mean, so, but that's certainly an area for snow removal, a certain area for additional, you know, guest parking, or, or that sort of thing. There's, there's, you know, it's a lot of land in, in that particular area to, to, to the side of the existing house.
Yeah, the road, the road going through there is eighteen feet wide, so it's gonna have, you know, roof, emergency vehicles and.
It's the same width as what we had proposed.
I, I know, but eighteen feet is not that much for a hundred-foot ladder truck.
This isn't reman, this is brand-new.
It's, it's, it is, it is and it isn't. The plan is new because we're trying to negotiate with the, with the board, a plan that is acceptable to both. That's what we're trying to do.
I understand, I'm just saying it's a reman, it's like a new thing.
It's the same road width, same layout, as, as what we had in the previous plan, that the chief and, and department had approved. So we're not changing that, there's no change on that. It's just the change is basically in the location of the units, and we've eliminated some of the duplex units, and the, and the ones on this side are all, are, uh, we, we have, I think it's four single-family units now.
So this is on reman, did, did the Housing Appeals Committee, um, say anything, any direction on reman, what?
No, the Housing, I mean, I, I'd refer to Bob, but basically, the Housing Appeals Committee takes a position, work it out. If you don't, if you don't work it out, come back to us, and we'll figure something out.
I mean, sometimes there's a decision that's made on reman that you need to abide by.
So this is voluntary?
Okay, all right.
Kevin, continue.
That's all I have right now.
Bob?
Yeah, well, good evening. Uh, I understand the concept, what you're trying to do is, and I, I do appreciate what you've done, we've, we've changed these plans the last couple of years, and I think what you're proposing, for me, works. Uh, I know that the other departments in the town, the fire department, conservation, water, needs to look at it. And if the question you're asking me is, does the concept work? I, I have to, I have to say that it does. But you being aggressive and telling us to say, that we say screw it, sure, it doesn't help your cause, dude.
It may not, but that.
Oh, no, no, don't argue with me, keep going, and my whole concept is gonna change. We're volunteers here.
I know you are.
We try to help the town, we try to help developers. People being aggressive to us and throwing it into our face doesn't help, all right? So, a little, a little bit of sugar goes a long way.
I'm not sure you were on the board.
So I'm just suggesting to you, in the future.
Thank you.
I liked what you were saying until the very end.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Any more, Paul, before I bring up neither Jason, if he has anything to say, quick, go ahead.
So just so the board understands the procedural posture of the matter, I have the joint motion for stay of the committee proceedings. So we didn't proceed to a hearing at the Housing Appeals Committee, and we agreed to remit the matter back, leaving that matter still open at the Housing Appeals Committee, for the board to look at a concept that was different, okay? So, I'll just read you this. All parties who've expressed a willingness to try and resolve this matter, including by a reduction in density of the project, and a further hearing before the Board of Appeals on remand. If approved with conditions that are acceptable to the applicant, the appeal may be able to be dismissed. If approved with conditions that are unacceptable to the applicant, or if the reconfigured project is denied, the applicant may request that the dates in the existing pre-hearing order be updated, and the matter could then proceed. All parties are acting in good faith and proceeding in a manner that is likely to produce a mutually acceptable resolution. So we told the Housing Appeals Committee that a postponement was in the interest of judicial economy and wouldn't prejudice anybody. And it may result in a final agreement, that's all we've told anybody, okay?
Let me grab Mr. Cusson real quick before we go Jason. So, there is one little problem I find with your concept, and I'm sure Mr. McKenzie's figured it out too. You guys don't have water. So not having water means you guys have to drive wells. Are you planning on driving a well per unit? Or are you planning on driving a well for the whole place? And if so, I'm sure a bigger wellhead is a bigger problem down the future. What's your plan?
Our plan right now is that there is no moratorium, DEP moratorium imposed, uh, by DEP. So the issue of water is a local board, a local concern, that is overridden by forty B. And, and having said that, that's my personal posi- position. If, 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 now, there may be a possibility.
You can make that a condition if you wanna go that position, and he knows you can make that a condition.
Yeah, you could make that a condition, and that, and that's, that's.
So in other words, it's giving you the ability to make it part of your engineering early?
We, we talked about that, our team. And there's a possibility that maybe wells could be driven, but we'd have to have a subdivision plan.
I'm just saying, we have other forty Bs that are already driving wells.
I'm sorry?
That are ready to roll.
I didn't hear.
So we already have other forty Bs that are already driving wells, and that are, that are ready to roll, understanding the concept. There is a moratorium, and.
There is no DE, there's no DEP imposed moratorium.
Well.
It's a moratorium that, that the local board has put into effect.
So that's your final position?
No, no, I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
So I wanna make sure you're saying what you're saying properly.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
I sent Mr. McKenzie up there to give you what the solution is.
Yeah, I mean, that, we need a, we need like, somebody else to tell us what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. McKenzie's gonna explain.
Cause I don't use your words.
I can't.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I can't, I can't speak to the legalities of the moratorium as it relates to a forty B project. But a solution to this problem is to create a definitive subdivision plan as part of the forty B process. To create a forty-foot right-of-way, and to create, put every building on its own lot, and have a private well serve each lot.
And that can be for something.
That works for this project, because there's no, there's, there's, there's no septic system, there's no setbacks to be concerned about, there's no nitrogen loading impacts to be concerned about. There's, there's, and Mr., Mr. Drummond has more sewer bediments than he needs for his twenty-unit, twenty-four-unit project. I think he's got enough for thirty units, that he's been paying for, for three, three years? So, the sewer connection certainly isn't an issue. And if we're at a sta-, if we're at a, um, you know, if we're, if we're at the point where we have an impasse on water supply, um, private wells to serve each building.
Is possible.
Is possible, each lot would be, in essence, we've done this in other parts of the state where public water isn't.
That's all I gotta state, it's, it's possible.
Each lot would be its own condominium.
Right.
In, in essence, as part of an, as part of the overall blanket subdivision.
Long as you're saying it's possible, cause whether you're conditioned left or right, you have wiggle room.
And that, that stands for each, your twenty, it's, it's a constant for both plans, twenty and twenty-one.
Thank you, Paul. Um, Jason, I'm thinking you're good for a little bit? Very good?
Sure.
Town Council?
Yeah, Jay Tallerman, Town Council, let me talk about the water first, and then I wanna talk a little bit about the site plan and some of the procedure that we have here. First, on the water, the DEP mor-, there doesn't have to be a DEP moratorium for us to have no water. Fact is, we have no water. A town could seek a DEP moratorium, which is a different animal. But there is just no water to provide, there's no capacity, so there could be in the future, there's not right now. So that issue is done. If it is, if they wanna do private wells, which, I mean, I think the science is gonna be the science, and there's gonna have to be some review of that, that's fine, a subdivision approval does tip into some other issues, which we'll have to talk about, in terms of the site planning and the, the roadway layout and things like that. Certainly possible, we do have, the Board of Health does have a regulation in town for individual wells with setbacks, so when they form lotting, they're gonna need waivers from those setbacks. There are two and a number of things, including property lines and this and that, all part of the forty B process that you'll have to consider, they'll have to, there's gonna have to be some test pits, cause Board of Health is gonna wanna chime in on this. Cause in some respects, sometimes for wells under forty B, there's less regulation for a zoning Board of Appeals, because it's considered to be more of a state-level permit, even though it's issued by a Board of Health, but here, we have a local regulation. So we're gonna wanna hear from the health agent in the Board of Health, as well as our civil engineer on that, all part of the process. If they do that, that'll be part of peer review. We should get it going soon, because unless we do further extensions, which is possible, we've got ninety days, Bob, from today.
Yes.
Right, today is one, so, um, we have ninety days to keep the hearing open, um, and that's what we're here for. Water's obviously a big issue, it's gonna have to get resolved by hook or crook. Couple comments on process, I, I do think that they have to, it's their obligation to provide you with enough information. I don't, I guess I don't mind on some level that they are teasing out, do you like this direction or not like this direction? But really, the burden's on them. So I think that, at a certain point, I don't think the board should be in a position of saying, we love it, or go home. I think the board can give some constructive feedback and continue the hearing, we've got ninety days, see, see what they can do with it. As to the plan itself, you know, I did the mediation on behalf of the board, I did the mediation based upon input I got from the board during executive session, as well as the comments that were made under the first decision. In that regard, some of the elements of this plan, and this is a policy question for this board, but I just wanna point out some of the things that came up during our discussions, and during your original discussion in the public hearing, that don't quite match with this plan. That doesn't mean a twelve-unit project is impossible, but I wanted to point out some of the things that, that don't quite match up with the pre, previous concerns and comments that you had. You've already mentioned a couple of them. One of them is emergency access, I think that's an issue that you'll have to either be satisfied that they've got it, or if you need a second one, or whatever, fire department should chime in, as they always do. With the new equipment in mind, that's all part of the process. Parking, parking is an issue, obviously, there has to be some accommodation. One of the comments that came up when I was going through the notes, the minutes, the prior decisions, the review of the prior plans, was that the parking in the driveways was somewhat shaky because they were so short. And in fact, my, just a, a review of it shows that they are maybe twenty feet, in some cases just under. That's, for a big SUV, you are like close to sticking out on the road, that was a comment, that this board had the depth of those driveways, so that's an issue. And if we get into a subdivision approval, that issue becomes even more paramount, because we're working with a right-of-way that is slightly larger than the roadway itself. So I think that that's an issue, visitor parking too, obviously, if we can get a roadway a little wider, then maybe we could have some on-street, um, roadway. Now, when I look at the basic orientation of this and compare that to the concerns of the board, as well as the Conservation Commission, which issued a number of comments, there was a concern regarding the, the distance to the wetlands there. And there has been some modest improvement there, no question. But certainly not on the magnitude that the board, to match up with the board's concern in terms of that distance. One of the things we discussed at the mediation as a, as a talking point was maybe not so much having units here, because another concern we had was impacts, as Paul's already, this Paul has already indicated, to that particular house. There would be no backyard, it'd be right against that house. If this roadway shifted down, this was a comment that, that has come up before, I'm not making this up. If this roadway shifted down, you could provide both, a buffer to that house, and move units that are over here further away from the wetlands. The units that they would have to recapture then, to make twelve, would be further away from the wetlands in this area. I completely appreciate that they have an interest in having less impact to the post-court neighborhood. I, I think that's an issue, if, if, if they've had more discussions with the post-court neighborhood than we have. So I'm not sure, it's kinda pick-your-poison kinda thing. I'm just pointing out to the board that these were issues that, that you all have discussed many times in these hearings, and that, um, uh, we discussed it in the mediation, and I think there, those specific concerns that this board had, there could be a more responsive, um, plan configuration that addresses those, while still maintaining a twelve-unit project. Because, I mean, I've looked at it a million times, as you all know, I've seen more than my fair share of site plans, so. This is for the board to decide, I just wanted to give you a reflection of, of kinda my, um, my view of this, when it, when I saw this, this plan. And ultimately, the feedback that you give to the applicant for our next session here, assuming there's a next session, which I assume is, is yours to give, you could choose this, say you like this configuration most of all. You could choose this, say you like this configuration most of all, and move on, but I do know the concern about the wetlands, the backyards, essentially being in the wetlands. And, and if you've walked that site, it does slope down pretty sharp into that wetland that there, to make a usable backyard for these folks, would kind of want you to kind of move it out of there. So those are just my reflections, both legal and from a plan configuration standpoint there. But I, you know, I do give, I want to give Mr. Drummond some credit, Mr. Cusson, who got a little hot tonight, Mr. Galvin, they've, they've put some effort into this. And, and I think the idea is that we figure out how to go forward, and I think the expectation for the next session is, you give feedback, they come with a more complete plan for, for next time. Assuming that that's what you'd like to see.
Thank you, Bob.
I, I really appreciate that. I'm just, I'm getting from the applicant that it's like, all or nothing right now, and I'm nothing, because that's what we're given. You're giving us a different view, and you represent us. The applicant is telling us, you either accept this, or we go back to court. So I'm just...
Well, again, I, I can't speak for them. I would hope that, because I think there's a way to do this site plan that addresses your concerns more clearly. The parking, the wetlands, the buffers to the properties, all those things, the emergency access, while still maintaining 12 units. I, I think it's possible. Whether or not it ends up that way or not, I don't know. All you can do is ask them.
Yeah, I could.
If they refuse to, then maybe it ends up being a short, a short hearing.
Okay.
I didn't mean to, Paul Cusson, I didn't mean to say, take it or leave it. What I, what I'm trying to say is that economically, we need 12 units. Now, some of the things that Jay has raised, we could do, we, we could do the parking, we could show snow removal, we could talk to the fire chief, asking, I assume he has not gotten this plan, so we...
Just to stop me there, Miss Cusson, just because I know, I know what you're going to say, and we all know what you're going to say, is, I think the problem we have with this project, isn't so much the units, it's the fact that you might as well consider each one of these houses a crate. There is no backyard on the, the back units, and there's no backyard to the front units. The only unit that does well is the existing house. Other than that, all the rest of them might as well just be crates. Because you can't go out the back of some of them, where you just fall off into the wetlands, and the other one you fall off into another person's yard. And if not, you play in the street. Because, like, like he said, the parking's only 20 feet long, and if you own a, and if you own a SUV of any size, your car takes up all your driveway. And if you own two cars, or you have two, two, you're adults, and you have one teenage child, where do you park that third? So it just circles back to the same problem we're going to have, no matter what. It's just going to be so dense that the problem can't be fixed, other than you guys fixing the problem. We're just going to fire it right back to you. So it isn't the unit problem that is the problem, the unit. It's the bedroom count to the unit problem.
What do you mean by bedroom count?
How many bedrooms that you can fit people into, to make, how can you hold it so that you don't have 9,000 cars in that little 12-unit spot? Because you know those, those garages are not going to be full of cars. You assume that. But they're more than likely to be full of everything else but cars.
Might be one car, I mean...
Might be a motorcycle, at best. So my point is, if you want to keep circling these horses around and around and around and waste all of our times, you can keep paying. We need to figure out a solution where you want 12 units, you figure out the bedroom count, and you figure out how it works with these, all these houses aren't just single crates, because no one can go out these backyards. That's 20-foot backyards that come off of the back of these lower houses. I don't know what it is off the back of the backhouses. I don't know the fall-off, but I know it falls. Again, it's not a 3D picture, it's a 2D picture. Not trying to be mean here, I'm just trying to move this along. Because, it isn't the fact that the concept is poor, it's the fact that, in the long run, how is it going to work? Because to me, it doesn't seem like it's going to work just on this 2D picture right here. The concept isn't bad, it's just not well. And this is Kingston. This isn't Braintree. This isn't Quincy. So think, change the concept a little bit, and then maybe we can work together.
Wait. I hear what you're saying. The issue of the yards, et cetera, is a marketing issue.
That's not an us problem, that's a you problem.
It's, it's not, it, it's a marketing issue, it's a decision.
Market's hot down here right now.
That the developer is, now, regarding the, the driveway, you know, how long is it? Should it be longer? That's something we can take a look at. We're not going to, the, the location, the, the, behind these homes here, there's not much land, and that's going to kind of stay that way.
I understand.
We can't, Jay, Jay suggested, and we talked about that before, of moving this, we looked at all of that. This is not the first plan that we redid. You know, we looked, Tom, Tom authorized several variations, and we felt this variation satisfied what we thought were most of, not all, but most of the objections. Like I said, we can, we can look at, you know, the driveway, we can look at the visitor parking, and we can maybe make a plan that's collared and shows a little bit more where, where the open space, because I don't think you, and I have a hard time frankly, sometimes looking at, as to where the, where all the open space is, and how much open space there is. There's a substantial amount of open space here.
But we can't count wetlands as open space. I want you to be very careful with what you, with your word stuff. Wetlands, to me, is not considered open space.
I'm not talking about the wetlands, I'm talking about way over here.
I know, I'm just saying.
So, yeah, and, and technically, wetlands are considered open space. But, it's not usable open space. Okay. And, and, but that, there again, that's a marketing issue. We're not marketing these homes to somebody with three kids, that, that, you know, a young couple with a couple of kids that are looking, that are looking to have a swing set. That's not the market.
You didn't come through as a 55-plus, so you came through as a normal, what you call it? A normal 40B. So, whether you say that or not, means, is irrelevant.
What makes you happy on the bedroom count?
I, I have no answer to that.
Well, you're saying you don't like the bedroom count, but then...
I don't know it.
Yeah, we don't know it, we asked you.
Well, we, you have, we can pull up the file, we have the architectural plan, right?
I'm just saying, that's, my point is, is that's part of the, this puzzle. We have a Rubik's Cube here that you're trying to, right now.
No, you have, not in...
We don't have anything here.
Not what we recently submitted, but we're not changing the unit type. So if, if you, if you want us to, let's just say, I'm just off the top of my head, you know, that, that we have two, two and a half bedroom, I mean, two bedrooms with a den or something like that, that's truly a den and not a bedroom, that's something we could, that's something we're willing to look at.
Again.
Now, Massa- Massachusetts under 40B requires at least 10% of the units to be three-bedroom. That's, that has nothing to do with us, and Jay can confirm that, that's a requirement of mass housing. So if, if you want us to, to adjust the bedrooms, I, that's something we can look at as well.
Yes, no, I understand that.
But, but I, we, we, but I, but we don't want to do all of that. We don't want to waste your time.
We just don't want to build more crate houses.
I'm sorry?
We don't want to build more crate houses. We don't want houses where the kids basically...
There won't come be very many kids here. We...
You can't say that. No one can say that.
I can, I can, no, I certainly can't.
That drives me bonkers, when someone says that. Well, there's never going to be kids here. How do you know?
Why wouldn't there be? There's an element...
Because it's not designed, I can show you in, in...
Hotels aren't supposed to have kids in them either, but there's kids living on 124/7.
Based on, on over 1,000 units that I've been involved in, on different types of buildings, how many types of buildings, what, how many children are generated, and so forth, this type of development is, does not generate a lot of children.
I think the environment's changed.
But it, but it will be some, sure. But we're not building three-bedroom and four-bedroom houses here, or condos.
All right.
Here.
Go ahead.
A brief, just, I think, we understand the plan doesn't show customary engineering detail that the 20-unit plan showed. It's a starting point. The question for the board is, are you willing to entertain a plan?
That's hard to say.
That is, that is 30 to 40% less impactful than the plan that's before HAC, that, in, in which, you know, mass housing issued a 24-unit eligibility letter. Are you willing, are you willing to further this process and have us provide more information? Or is 12 units, because all the, all the things that you're mentioning about no backyard, there's more backyards here than there is in the 20-unit plan. Everything you're mentioning...
The 20-unit plan is gone.
Is a better plan than the 20, the 20-unit plan isn't gone. It's in court.
So the way that this works, I think what he's trying to say is that if we reject this, they can go further, and the court can approve the 24, 24?
It'll be in litigation, 20.
20.
20 is the plan you acted on, that was the one that was appealed.
But we, yeah, and then part of the other side of that quote is, we said 4. So, as a judge seeing, seeing...
Well, we're not here to talk about 4, we're here to talk about...
I'm just saying, when the judge says, well, they want 20, and they want 4, they're going to say, what's the half? You guys are going to have a real big argument to make there.
The judge will either approve the 20 or the, or what we did. I mean...
So, if you want, I'll make it more fun, I'll, I'll bring the public up to talk, and we'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll see what goes from here.
I just want to say, we're still at, what, 1.6 acres? Surrounded by wetlands. I appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah.
You've been before us many times. I think this is the most dense project you've ever been a part of.
It is. Doesn't, doesn't mean...
It's just, it's the wrong area.
But, but 12, 12 units on one...
You could build four beautiful homes there, the way the market is, with that view?
It's not going to work.
You're telling me you can't make any money?
Correct. Correct.
It's none of my business, but...
No, I can, I can not only, I can not only tell, I can, I can show you. What was approved as the value of the land, you know how, you know how much, you know how much a foot of road costs today? One linear foot.
You guys decided to build...
No, I, I'm just, I'm telling you why four houses would, would not work. The, the, the road that we have to put in, okay, and, and Paul might be aware of this, all right? Not too long ago, I was doing a pro forma, I'd do 150, 200 bucks a foot for road. It's over $1,000 per linear foot for a road today.
And houses are a fortune today.
And, when's the last time you bought a sheet of plywood? Go, go, go to Home Depot, buy a sheet of plywood today versus a year and a half ago.
I never thought I'd see as many million-dollar homes around here.
I, I agree, but the cost of construction has gone through the roof. I'm, I'm doing a little addition on my own house, and I can't believe, I can't believe the cost. You know, I dug, I dug a hole not too long ago, I mean, it's just, so, so, yes, the prices have gone up substantially, the costs have gone up substantially, we do a pro forma, and four un, four units doesn't work. And, and eight units frankly, doesn't work. I, I had to do everything I possibly could to get...
Just 10?
The developer to, no, because we still got to do three affordables. The affordables are going to be selling, just to give you an idea why some of the numbers don't work. An affordable is going to be selling here at about $225,000, and it's going to cost twice that. So that's a loss that comes right, I mean, I'm not complaining about it, those are the facts, that's the program. But that's, but that's, that's, that's the reality of the financial side of, of a 40B.
Then why build it?
No, we, well, we have a piece of land.
That's what he should say.
So, so there, there again, we're, you know, I'm, I'm here trying, I'm, I apologize for getting all upset, but I, I get upset, and I get excited, and I get emotional about these developments. Maybe I shouldn't, they're not even mine, but...
All right, Miss Cusson, I got to bring up the public.
So, I, I mean, I don't think there's, so we're willing to work with the board, but we need the direction that's, now, if the board says, there's no way in hell, I don't care, they're 12 units, I can't do it, but we're not, we can't change the layout, we can't change this road location substantially. Can we make it a little bit wider? Maybe, but if we make it wider, then we've got to push the houses back again, and maybe we do have to push the houses back anyhow. If all of a sudden you're saying, you might be correct, that it's only 20 feet to the curb, I think it's actually more to the curb, but if it's only 20 feet to the curb, maybe we've got to make that 22. So it means two feet, where's the two feet coming from? So we've got to push it that way, towards the wetland.
All right, back up.
And we looked at, and we looked at all of those plans.
All right, I got to hear the public. All right, anyone from public, please speak, name, address, please. Step right up.
I didn't think so, but okay.
Mm-hmm.
Point de voix, 93 Elm Street in Kingston, so I'm a town resident, and also with the Jones River Watershed Association and Jones River Landing, which is upstream of here. And as a result of being upstream of here, a couple of years ago, we did a flooding analysis, a higher GZA got it, and was, was thrilled to hear that the water in 2100 was going to be 10 feet higher at high tide than it is today. And since then, there've been a lot of information from the state coming out, and I'm a little surprised it hasn't reached housing court yet, or housing authority yet. Because the floodplain here on this property is 11, that existing building they're taking down is in the floodplain. We have still pictures from last year, when it was just nice high tide on not, not a breezy day at all, and there's flooding over here on this property. I think the floodplain is way more critical to the town and to the developer, and to, quite frankly, anybody that might live there, especially on the, the riverside of the property near the wetland edge. It's coming up fast, it's coming up faster than you can imagine. It's flooding out Landing Road, we're going to all have to be retreating. We're, we're making plans to raise, to take down some of our buildings and raise the boat shop, which is the most historic building there, so that we can float it. And we're going to do that soon. So my question is, you know, what is the timeline, what is the longevity of these homes? Is it, you know, 10 years, or 20 years, or 30 years? And who pays when it has to be raised or changed? And how affordable is that going to be? And how pretty is that going to be? And how expensive is that going to be? I don't think it's a good idea to put any of those homes within the 50-foot buffer, let alone anywhere close to elevation 12, or 13, or 14. It's frankly nuts. And I don't mean disrespect, I just mean we're too far behind the science. We got to hurry up, speed it up. The Atlantic is, it's so hot now, did you hear the, you know, they're expecting 17 hurricanes this year? You know, it's because of how warm everything is, it's because of climate change. And we have to face that. As a town, as a coastal town, we have to face it. In, in 2100, half our seawall, wall fell down. Why? Tide comes up, tide goes down, and it was a concrete seawall, folks. You can go look at it now, we haven't changed a thing. When the Ardeno was just, you know, they did the paving down there, they added, what, 18 inches of soil and concrete to the, to it, so that people could continue to get to their boats? If, if they could keep everything on that backside, wherever the homes are, back here, put everything back there, they might be able to get away with it. They're not getting away with any of that, in my opinion. And I would ask you, and Town Council, and Jason, and everybody, to really come up to speed on what's going on. CZM, Coastal Zone Management, has, you know, new maps there, you can see it in terms of their projections, whether they're accurate or not. I know there's some inaccurate stuff on those, for instance, they still have the Elm Street Dam on there. So there's, there's some things that aren't quite accurate. But it's better than believing that that's not happening. And it's especially because this is facing directly into the northeast, and that's when we get our really wicked stuff. With a northeast wind of 40 or 50 miles an hour, you're going to get a storm surge up there, the likes of which you've never seen before. And I, I apologize for, for laying it on the ground like that, but that, this project is not going anywhere if the climate chief gets to the housing court in time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak for, against? Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Brian Monberg, nine May Ave. I got a vacant lot next to me. I try to get a single-family house so my wife and I could downsize a little bit, and I can't even do that. So maybe what I probably should do is if they can pass this here, why don't I combine my two lots together and put six units? I'll make them all affordable.
I'm stopping you.
It's just, the thing is, is it's just such a small lot down there. I don't understand. And I was, Jay, I mean, I mentioned it to him one day. I said, you know, I says, he said, well, you go to Brockton, you go to Cambridge, you might have a little, this much grass in between houses. I said, I didn't move to Kingston. I moved to Kingston because I didn't want to be in the city. And this is what they're trying to do with May Ave. They're just trying to put too much congestion in there. I mean, I understand you guys want to help people, but I heard figures of $440,000 for affordable housing. And now they're saying they're going to sell them for $225,000? I don't find that possible. I don't think that you guys are going to be selling those houses for $225,000. I mean, I'm a small guy, too, and I try to make a little bit of money for myself, make my family a little bit better. And I can't do it. I get shut down. It's a non-conforming neighborhood. So I don't know if you guys approve 12 units. I don't think you're doing justice to the town of Kingston.
Thank you. Anyone else? For or against? Name and address, please.
Hi, Trica Hart, Five Post Court. What I continue to hear is that this is not about unit count, and I agree. This is about whether or not the problems that you pointed out are solved, and I do not think they are solved with this. In addition, I believe a number of these units are actually larger than the other units, which is a little bit mind-boggling to me. So if you're going to take units out but make the other ones larger, you're not really decreasing the impervious surface at all, are you? So I'm confused by a plan that's not really a plan, why they wouldn't show where the open spaces, where the snow storage is, why they wouldn't look at the concerns that you had in the decision and fix them. I don't think this plan fixes that. Thanks.
Anything else from the public? Anyone online, or in the Zoom that you see them?
There were some comments on there.
They popped up, but they were about the well.
So one of them is, why can't there be one community well to serve the 12 units? There's precedent for this in other small 40B projects that Jay is probably aware of. I don't know what the next comment means. They should have brought that plan then. One community well, I think that you had said that might be a possibility, or...
That's not what we want to pursue. It would involve permitting a public water supply with DEP. It's very costly, the lengthy permitting process. And I don't think it's feasible for this property because you'd have to create a zone one.
Right, right, right.
That is, would be devoid of any kind of pavement buildings. It's, it's limited to passive recreation. So it's not, it's not feasible, please.
So I guess our question is to the board is, do we want them to continue to figure this out, this 12 units? I, I think, well, someone in the public kind of picked up a piece of that I was pick, basically getting at is, even though they've changed the, the number configuration, it does almost look like the same overlay. It's just kind of a bigger building. Like, they didn't fix the...
Building's the same size.
Yeah.
Oh, they're the same size, right.
Is there, is there a way that we can go into
Executive session?
Executive session and speak with our town council?
You can just make that, you just, you can just make that a vote right now.
Well, no, we couldn't do it now because it wouldn't be noticed, but...
We can't go executive session during, during a town meeting?
No, because you would have to notice it, and we can only talk about executive session from a, a strategy standpoint. I'm not saying you can't on this, and, and there may be some value in it. But you would have to notice an actual, and during the course of a hearing, you can't really have separate meetings where the public
Okay. That's why I asked.
No, it's a good question. It, it gets a little cumbersome. To me, I think the board is doing a good job of being, pretty much putting it out there. I will, I'm sure I'll have offline conversations with Paul, which I do frequently. That's not an open meeting law issue. Just kind of talking about direction, but I'd rather be a little more careful and just do everything
Yeah.
in the public hearing here.
So then our option would be to continue this to...
Yeah, I mean, we can continue. I mean...
I mean, they, they have some feedback, and they obviously, they got to talk to fire, right? They've got to think about the parking issue.
I mean, my...
The water issue obviously is going to be a little bit of a change.
My kind of motive in continuing it, though, is to, I don't want them to do, I don't want them to do much more work right now. I think that, for me, I just wanted to speak with you about...
Position?
Yeah, just, I don't know.
You and I can have an offline conversation. I just can't have serial conversations
Okay.
with you all. It has to be less than a quorum. I will point out to Bob and Brad that if you're going to go the subdivision route as the next part of this, to take a look at the Board of Health well regs and the setbacks there and some other requirements that you're going to have to either waive or comply with, and then obviously, you're going to want to check in with the Health Department on, on their concerns there. So, I mean, I think there's certainly some things they can improve here in
Yeah.
providing more detail. Whether or not they want to take some of your other comments to heart, up to them. I'd rec, I personally would recommend a continuance to see if they...
Well, last month they want to continue.
Yeah.
Obviously up to them. You guys hear enough in your, in your...
Problem with, so you have 90 days.
We're going to ask for...
We don't have a meeting until July, until
Almost August.
30 days from, more than 30 days from now.
We're full July 17.
Well, we contemplated the 90-day process anyways, so you...
We're going to ask for another waiver right off the bat.
I'll come up to the microphone.
Basically, whatever our continuance is, we're going to ask for that, that in time back. So if it's 45 days out, we're going to ask for a 45-day waiver.
We would be amenable to extending the timeframe beyond.
Okay.
So that you would be able to consider additional information that we would supply. What I think Brad and Paul and I, on behalf of Tom, have been trying to say to you, assuming we could resolve the issues with the wells, assuming we could satisfactorily resolve the issue of parking, assuming we could satisfactorily resolve the issue of the fire department and access, and they agreed with us that this is safe access that they could support. Is, is there an idea that the board could support a concept like 12 units? And that's, I think, what we're trying to do tonight. We will, we heard what you said. If you're not going to give us any more feedback, we'll supply some additional information, some additional detail, and, and see what you say there.
I think that's where we're at. We're perfectly honest.
I mean, that's, that's where, I, I can't decide tonight that question, but I do, I don't want you to spend a lot of money on this. I get where you're, what you're saying. You want us to, but we need, I think we all need a little bit more time to kind of sit on what you presented.
So, and even, even, even being said, this is such a concept. You're so far away from being a, you know...
Yeah, so i- if I may, and to, to Lane's point, and in the interest of sparing them expense of fully engineered plans, some of the things that, what I'm teasing out of the conversation is, some of the things that the board has referenced as their concerns, whether it's water, parking, emergency access, could be, at least the next version here could address that, still in a conceptual phase to see if it's something that you could start to work towards, right? Is that what I'm seeing? If something
Yeah.
came back and the, the parking was addressed a little bit better, the emergency access, we had a concept of a, a water thing, that then maybe we're at a point where we could say, hey, do some engineering here.
Exactly. I, I don't, I don't think it's there.
I, I will say, I mean, I am pretty persuaded by the first person that spoke about the trajectory of the, the water table.
Yeah, I, I do want to...
Kind of want to...
And I, I am not disbelieving it at all. In fact, I believe that climate resiliency is with us, and preparing for that is important. The, the problem I have is an attorney who works in this field is that we don't have the regulations and the statutes that go along with that, where even if it's reasonably foreseeable that this whole thing could be underwater, and if you've been to the site, you can see that the tracks operate as a dam there. So I get it. I just don't have a tool to have you act on.
This, the, I guess the stop for us, though, is like, we're here to kind of protect the residents of Kingston.
100%, but...
If we are given some information that
But you can only do it...
There are going to be sold houses that will be underwater in 50 years.
You have to do it through the lens of
Today.
A statute or a regulation that we can operate under. I, I think Pine has done some really good work. She understands this stuff. She presents it well. And I think we all believe it, unless you don't believe in climate change. And then
Yeah.
it's, it's just, how do we get there? I think it's something to think about, but, which is another reason, perhaps, that the, the shift in units even further away from the wetlands could be helpful, at least a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last bite? Very quickly.
I just want to advise that if we go down the private well route, that we do water sampling. Because my advice on doing geothermal along the river was, ain't going to work because it's, the water's salty.
I was just saying, well, it's probably a little brackish.
I can make a motion to continue
August. Got to be wailed August.
To the first meeting in August?
Probably the second.
Probably the second.
It's August 7.
I think, I think we're going to have a lot of spillover from that big, bad meeting. That's your last 17th meeting. It's going to have a lot of, a lot of issues coming out of it.
Why don't we...
That meeting's going to have like, maybe like if I can power through that meeting.
You're a, go fast?
Well, it's two 40Bs. I can go as fast. This is only one 40B. So there's going to be some spillover. I just want to give a...
So all five of us are voting?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any dates that were not available that we know of?
No, I just said, the only reason I said late August is it gives them a little of a window pushback, and...
I have no life.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know where I'll be half the time anyway, so...
The problem, like, I don't know my schedule.
No one knows their schedule.
Yeah, sometimes.
And then early September is when kids go back to school.
I don't want to push it out too far and then not be available then, so...
Kim Lee, so you're saying the 17th, you got a full agenda?
Of July.
July is on.
It's, it's... Don't matter. We still got Indian Pond. We still got 106. Yeah, we just, it's...
Yeah, we still have, and we have Three Grandview and Smith Lane, which is new.
Yeah, we have, it's just a powerful... What, August, the early August? No, I don't, no. I don't even want, I don't even want to touch it. No, I don't even know. Nope. Sorry. I don't get paid to come here, so no.
Don't get paid anymore.
Why don't we just do August 7?
All right, we'll do August 7. Whether you have something or not, we'll go from there.
And we can, I mean, if...
I just have a feeling we're going to have a spillover. We're not even going to get through probably some of the stuff on that night.
Well, then we'll put them on the next one.
Okay, very good. All right.
Yeah.
No, August 7th. Good, good?
All right, I'll make a motion to continue this to August 7.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Wow.
No, adjourn the hearing.
Someone second it, please?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Have a good night.